Okay, so we were ready to resume student recognition.
Yes, this is one of our most favorite parts of our board meeting, where we have an opportunity to recognize our students. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Ms. Eileen Littman.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Eileen Littman. I'm a business teacher at the high school. I'm also the co-advisor of our DECA Business Club, and we have a fantastic accomplishment to recognize this evening. The Brookhaven Bike Co-op has created a contest for the safety of bicyclists and pedestrians on Long Island. And the co-op has come into existence. Greg? The founder of the Brookhaven Bike Co-op is Greg Ferguson and his family. They established this foundation. And they created the contest and included our DECA members because his family and several other families, students in the district, have been a part of our prestigious club, and he wants that to continue. And he wants to recognize the students that participate in this club and have such wonderful accomplishments each year. They have accomplishments in their own competitions, which are regionally, statewide, and nationally, and now we added this contest. So with us this evening, Kara Han, the 5th District Legislature, and Councilmember Jonathan Cornwright are going to present the students with proclamations. Just to give you a little background, the contest consisted of creating a marketing campaign, and the students had to create a print ad, which was a poster, social media ads, as well as a video. And amongst all the groups in our DECA club, the four students that stood out the most are Group Number 7, consisting of Ashley Liu, Robin Zhang, Claire Yang, and Lilian Zi. The Friends of the Brookhaven Bike Co-op were so generous, and they offered a $1,000 prize for the winning team, which will be presented this evening. The district is also recognizing all four students for their outstanding accomplishments. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. I'm legislator Kara Han from the Suffolk County Legislature. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for being here today. I just want to say, well, to Eileen Littman, what a phenomenal job she does with this club. This contest, it was so much fun judging the competition, what they learn in terms of marketing, from a social media perspective, from an understanding, what catches the attention and catches the eye of individuals when you're working on a marketing campaign. And then, you know, putting it all together, whether it was video, or poster, or the social media, the learning that happens in this club is phenomenal, and we were thrilled to be part of it. And then, on top of that, to have it be about bicycle safety. Suffolk County and Long Island, some of the most dangerous roads in the country. So this is really important that our young people learn these lessons, and this group was helping making that happen through this contest. So thank you very much. Thank you to the winners.
Legislator Han, I just wanted to also thank you. I know you've been a leader on passing legislation for bicycle safety on the roads, and I just want to thank you for your leadership on that as well.
Thank you.
We're going to take a picture. Our public relations liaison, Jennifer, so if we can come up to the front. Legislative Han, Mr. Ferguson. All right, everyone ready? Perfect, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to...
I want to thank Ms. Littman, Mr. Ferguson, legislator Han, and Mr. Cornwright, and our wonderful, amazing students. We know that our students are in testing periods right now, so if you want to stay, of course, you are more than welcome to stay, but we would understand if you chose to leave at this time as well. So he will leave the choice up to you. Thank you, and congratulations again.
This brings us to reports, and our first report is our student representative. This is Jessie's last report.
Thank you, thank you. Hi, for anyone who doesn't know me, I'm Jessie B.R., the Ward-Melville Student Rep. This is the last time I'll be sitting at this table, reporting and advocating in the role of student rep. I remember walking into this room not knowing what to expect. I'm sure if I would be an impactful voice for my fellow students, hopeful that I won't forget something, and wondering if I would get to keep this really cool nameplate. Hopefully, I will. I left that first meeting energized and proud to be part of this district. A year later, looking back on everything from keeping the school open, responding to student concerns, and showing up both physically and with action, has made me even more energized and proud today. I want to introduce the person that will be sitting in this seat soon, our next-year student representative, Riley Meckley, and she's actually here today. She's right here, my best. So Riley is one of the most hard-working, enthusiastic, well-spoken, and outgoing people that I know. You likely have met her before. She is a passion for service and advocates for change on behalf of the students. She presents the PTSA and has stood up before this board. Riley will be an amazing student government leader and BOE student rep. We worked closely together for the past few years on events, issues, and spent last summer, and really all year, finding ways to redesign all events and coming up with innovative ways to still have our meetings. On behalf of the students, we are grateful for all your service. Okay, last time. Starting with something that could use some attention, the AP exams this year. Neighboring large districts that were not in five days a week gave the easier and less stressful paper format. In Three Village, we took the online format with no choice of paper. Students invest a lot of time, and having a fair test should be available. Many students have mentioned that they likely would not have chosen to stay in AP classes if they knew that at the beginning of the year, testing would be online for some of the classes. Classes were in session, so those that tested missed classes, and also still had to turn in assignments that they missed. The online format themselves are just way harder. You're trying to read a lot of content on a small Chromebook or a personal screen for history, or even worse, in BC Calc and Statistics, AB Calc, we had to show our work, literally, it's like type in the work on the computer, and there wasn't any option of like taking a picture, which is really hard. Also, testing from home also means outside noise, like landscapers, dogs, phone ringing, stuff like that. So for next year, please find better options. The reward for many college... The reward for many is college credit for scores that are 3, 4s, or 5s, and it would be nice to have the opportunity to take an easier format in exams next year. On a more positive note, started the school with silent fields, but our fields are anything but quiet now. Major shout-out to Boys Varsity Lacrosse, who is made counties, and their game will be tomorrow. Good luck to you guys. You also might have heard the Ward-Melville Music Program or saw the play. It was simply amazing to have a live audience. Huge kudos to security and custodial staff and innovation of everyone involved for finding a way for musicians to play last week at the Pops Concert. For many musicians, we are in two times-a-day classes and night practices. It was the first time in over one and a half years that we've played in front of a live audience and heard an actual applause. It was really nice. Spotlining the seniors, we had something nearly every few days through the last month. From the senior trip, senior barbecue, senior academic award ceremony, superlatives, senior scholarship night, and our yearbook signing. In the last few weeks, we've been greeted by chalk messages, gifts, our elementary school teachers, and our elementary students while we marched the bus circles. The elementary students seemed excited as we were. There are so many people to thank for these things, and I'm just going to say that we appreciate it, maybe more than ever before. Lastly, I remember how I said out loud that we like snow days, and the next thing, you know, we couldn't see the fields because they were covered in snow for weeks. No, I'm not wishing for that now, summer. However, I'm going to put a wish out into the world that if things change in the next few days with the governor and restrictions, that maybe we can condense graduation into like two ceremonies, or maybe less. It has been a true honor to sit here and serve the students in the district. Thank you for your questions, following my humor and words of encouragement. I've seen firsthand how you make things happen, following up after the meetings. The board, staff, and all administration has been part of my journey. Thank you for your support, especially when it would have been easier to do nothing. You did something. Thank you.
Jessie, we want to thank you for a year that was wonderful. You had all sorts of information for us. You had a good report every board meeting. You were wonderful. And I'd like to present you with an award from the Three Village School District. A little bit.
Congratulations, Jessie. You're going to go far, and you're shining bright already. You've done a great job. We... This board loves having a high school liaison, and every year, we are blessed with fantastic seniors that come and represent the senior class, and you did a phenomenal job, and I have no doubt for this young lady as well. She's also going to do a great job. Thank you, guys, so much.
Jessie, I'm just going to follow it up in stating what a remarkable and extraordinary individual you are. Your advocacy for your classmates has been just incredible throughout this year, and kudos to you. And we welcome you, Riley. Cannot wait to work with you as well. And congratulations, Jessie, on your upcoming graduation, and the best to you always.
I just want to add that, you know, I've known your family since you were a little guy, and I've just been so proud of you, watching you grow and develop into a very fine young man, and I can't wait to see what you do next. Congratulations. Thanks.
That brings us to our next report, the Anti-Racism and Social Justice Task Force.
It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Paul Gold, who is an assistant principal at Ward-Melville High School. He wears many hats. He's also the Director of Social Studies, K-12, and in addition, he is the current Chair of our Anti-Racism and Social Justice Committee. Dr. Gold?
Thank you, Ms. Petisich. Good evening to the members of our central administration. Thank you for the opportunity, for the Board of Education, to be able to present on behalf of the Anti-Racism and Social Justice Task Force. I'm here to provide you with some updates about what we've done this year, a little bit about what we plan on doing, and how we got to this point. First slide I wanted to share with all of you is our mission. Our mission statement, along with our goals that were set this year, sit in each of the buildings, including the North Country Building, somewhere close by, right behind the screen here. While I certainly don't need to read this slide to you, everybody is certainly capable of reading it, I do want to point out a few important things that I think we all need to kind of understand about this task force. And they lie in words such as "respect" and "self-awareness" and "authenticity," and "a willingness to learn from one another." It's a rather appropriate time to think about diversity, equity, inclusivity, when it comes to issues of race and gender, religion, ability, and/or sexuality. It's our responsibility to work with our students, with our staff, and with our community so they understand our mission and understand the importance of a task force, such as the Anti-Racism and Social Justice Task Force. I put up here our goals, and while they may be a little bit difficult to read, I wanted to share again some key words that I think are certainly important about our goals. These goals were written, they were developed, they were cultivated by the members of the district-wide task force. Many of the words in here are important, and they guide us in the work we have done this year and the work we will continue to do in years to come. Words such as "educate," affirm and value diversity, work collaboratively in the name of inclusivity and acceptance, embrace learning, and constantly improve the work which we are charged to do. The Hebrew saying, "Tikun Olam," means "to repair the world," to behave and act constructively, to improve, to establish, and to prepare. It's from this that I would like to continue this conversation, and I'd like you to take a look at the next two slides very carefully. It's those slides that focus on the most important part of the work we do, and that's our children. We have a responsibility to look at the whole child and every child. So I wonder what a child feels like when they walk into one of our schools and they perceive themselves to be excluded. So if you look at the circle in "excluded," and you look at all of the mini-circles, they all look the same. They fill out what I call the social strata of any school, not just a Three Village school, but any public school. And then there are those on the outside, those with different colors, those that stand alone, feel different, not part of a community. So I wonder how the children feel that have to bear that burden when they walk into a school every day. Or those that are segregated, that have met and found their commonalities, but are still outside the social strata of any of our schools. They have an opportunity to work together, to develop relationships, but they're still divided by difference. We have these students in Three Village. We recognize that, and that's part of our work as an Anti-Racism and Social Justice Committee, to recognize that there are children that walk into our buildings every day and perceive themselves to be not part of the makeup of what could be and is a beautiful Three Village school. It gets a little better, but it certainly is not ideal. There are some students who get into that social strata, who integrate themselves, and are part of a diverse community. Still the same, they remain together, segregated within, and therefore don't have all the opportunities to embrace everything that our schools have to offer. Our goal, our long-term goal, is to make every child feel included, to be part of something. The last part of this slide represents the vision of diversity that this Anti-Racism and Social Justice Committee want for every child. It's our responsibility, not just as a district-wide committee, not just as a school committee, but as a community, to work together collaboratively with a vision of assisting and supporting every child, regardless of race, ethnicity, sexuality, academic ability, gender, to feel part of an inclusive environment in our schools. In her TED Talk, we hear the words of Nigerian writer Chi-Amanda Adichie when she talks about the dangers of a single story. To only hear one side of a story, to not understand perspective and point of view, to not be able to articulate and understand what other people have to say. And what she states in her TED Talk is that by not listening to all sides of a story, what we do ultimately is rob people of their dignity. This is a very interesting TED Talk. Feel free to go onto YouTube and then TED Talks and watch this 16-minute, very interesting, enlightening video. I think you'll find it's very informative and will help you to think about what we, as a committee, choose to do and plan for our students and our staff next year and in the years to come. So where does our work take us? How do we, in our district and our schools, make sure that all students and staff have the opportunity to live in a school community where dignity is honored? Because ultimately, that is what we want for all of our children. I think that all committees, whether it's the school-levels committee or the district-wide committee, can embrace a slide like this, where we recognize patience and empathy, listening and openness, how we treat our students, how students treat themselves and each other with fairness and appreciation, with validation and acceptance, and how ultimately we can affirm differences and uniqueness, how we can presume competence and positive intent, and ultimately build partnerships and community. These are the keys to assisting, to supporting every student and allowing them to come to school every day, knowing that their dignity is being honored. This year, we've established a task force. We've had discussions with alumni. We've had the honor of meeting and working as an outside consultant who has worked with us, Dr. Terrence Roberts, who is an amazing civil rights icon, whose life experiences are written about, shown. He's one of the Little Rock Nine who integrated Central High School in the 1950s. He's proud to be working with us. He has been a steady guiding hand in our work. He has assisted us, and he has enlightened us, and will continue to do that next year as well. We've also created a website, as part of the Three Village School District website, that will be linked within the next day or two, that is specifically for the Anti-Racism and Social Justice Task Force, so that the community can be apprised of the work that we have done and we will continue to do over time. It is important to recognize that we have been provided with a foundational blueprint from the New York State Education Department. State Education Department recognizes that we cannot turn a blind eye to the work that must be done in the areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion. They will assist us in creating policy, and it is also the work embedded in our curriculum and the culturally responsive sustaining framework, which is right over here, that's going to assist our district-wide and school task force in the continuation of building environments that educate, affirm, and value student engagement, learning, growth, and achievement. The culturally responsive and sustaining framework is broken out into four different standards. The first one is to create a welcoming and affirming environment. The second is to create an inclusive curriculum and method of authentic assessment. The third is to create high expectations and rigorous instruction. And lastly, to promote ongoing professional development and support for our staff. It's these guiding standards and this framework that will in large part assist the district and school task forces in the work we need to do in both the short and long terms. The Anti-Racism and Social Justice Task Force and its commitment towards diversity, equity, and inclusion does not exist in a vacuum. There are many other initiatives that are coming from the State Education Department that are important, that are also a priority, and that work carefully with diversity, equity, and inclusion. This includes civic education. Starting in the 2022-2023 school year, there will be a 4+1 graduation pathway that includes the opportunity for students to obtain a civic seal of readiness as part of their diploma. This work does not exist separately from the Anti-Racism and Social Justice Committee. You cannot talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion. You cannot talk about authentic assessments, rigorous instruction, having student voices heard without talking about civic education. So I look to my left, and I see the standard setters of what students' commitment to civic education looks like. I look at two students who are well-rounded, articulate, bright, committed to the school and surrounding community. And then I think about civic education and what we, as educators and a community, do for our kids. And I feel like we've done a very good job, and we'll continue to do so. So thank you both for an excellent job. Well done. We never lose sight of our priority, our children. Race and racism exist. exist. But we remove those barriers. But it's our students that should be our loudest voices. They are the, they are the people that want us to do this work. They want our guidance and our support as they do their work. We have a personal, moral, and professional responsibility to support all students in their education as they become productive and responsible citizens. Our energy should focus on giving students safe space, the opportunity to listen and learn, to write and speak, to engage in conversation that empowers them to understand diverse perspectives and points of view. It is only by empowering our students that we as a district and a community will recognize and affirm that we are raising the next generation of engaged, prepared, and well-thought-out citizens that know how to use their voices and speak their mind. As we read this final quote from the New York State Education Department Chancellor, "Let us never forget that we are a wonderful community with a well-known and important history in this country. As much as we hold on to diverse experiences and beliefs, it is our children that are the tie that binds." Let us not forget that in the end, the work we do focuses on creating well-thought-out citizens that will embrace diverse global equity and inclusivity. Our classrooms need to be places where our students feel comfortable talking and listening, writing and researching, growing and preparing for their leadership roles in the world. The best teachers in the world can take our children only so far. Ultimately, it is all of us that will shape our children into citizens with character and integrity. I hope we show every child what it means to be able to be kind, caring, and empathetic human beings occupying this planet. Let us always remember they are watching us and modeling our every move. So today, I spent a lot of time back and forth emailing with Terrence Roberts, our consultant. He and I were talking about the importance of tonight's presentation and recognizing that we have to focus on anti-racism and social justice, that we have to focus on embracing diversity, equity, and inclusion. And he said to me, Paul, maybe you want to share at the end a very brief, very brief story that may help people understand exactly what our goal is. So if it's okay, I'll share this briefly. A rabbi once asked his students, "How do we know when the night has ended and the day has begun?" The students thought they grasped the importance of this question. There are, after all, prayers and rites and rituals that could only be done at nighttime. And there are prayers and rites and rituals that belong only to the day. So it is important to know how we can tell when night has ended and day has begun. So the first and brightest of the students offered an answer. "Rabbi, when I look out at the fields and I can distinguish, distinguish between my field and the field of my neighbor, that's when the night has ended and the day has begun." A second student offered his answer. "Rabbi, when I look from the fields and I see a house and I can tell that it's my house and not the house of my neighbor, that's when the night has ended and the day has begun." A third student offered another answer. "Rabbi, when I see an animal in the distance and I can tell what kind of animal it is, whether a cow or a horse or a sheep, that's when the night has ended and the day has begun." Then a fourth student offered yet another answer. "Rabbi, when I see a flower and I can make out the colors of the flower, whether they are red or yellow or blue, that's when the night has ended and the day has begun." Each answer brought a sadder, more severe frown to the rabbi's face. Until finally, he shouted, "No! None of you understands. You only divide. You divide your house from the house of your neighbor? Your field from your neighbor's field? You distinguish one kind of animal from another? You separate one color from all the others? Is this all we can do? Divide, separate, split the world into pieces? Isn't the world broken enough? Isn't the world split enough into fragments? Is that what Torah is for? No, my dear students, it's not that way. Not that way at all." The shocked students looked into the sad face of the rabbi. Then, "Rabbi, tell us, how do we know that night has ended and day has begun?" The rabbi stared back into the faces of his students and with a voice suddenly gentle and imploring, he responded, "When you look into the face of the person who is beside you and you could see that person is your brother or your sister, then finally, the night has ended and the day has begun." Thank you for-- Thank you for the opportunity to present. I look forward to our continued work together. I want to send a special thank you to every member of the District-Wide Anti-Racism and Social Justice Committee. It is not easy to start a committee this important. The work we've done together has been exceptional, but not as exceptional as the work we will do together in years to come. I look forward to our partnerships, our working together, our collaboration, our brotherhood and sisterhood in the name of children, exceptionality, and helping to make our world and our community a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gold. Does anyone have any questions?
I just want to make a comment. I want to say, Paul, that was one of the most inspiring presentations-- where are you? Oh, I see. That I've heard. I want to tell you, I am so proud of you and this committee of what you have put together this evening for the community, for our students, for our children, to move forward, to talk about every child is so important. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you're doing now and for what you intend to do for all of the children in the future. That was an excellent presentation. Thank you.
Just to follow up on Mr. Vizzo, Paul, you have done an exceptional job. Your leadership, your professionalism, your care and concern is always leading the way. And so, thank you. And we look forward to working with you and with the members of the task force, some of which I see here this evening. So it's nice to see all of you. And some of our students that are involved at the, at the building level. We have work to do, but we are on a good path. So thank you for that leadership.
I just want to say thank you, Paul. That was fantastic, and I couldn't agree with you more. Division is not the answer, no matter where it comes from. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to See the American Rescue Plan presentation.
Yes. It's a pleasure to introduce Ms. Erin Connolly. She is our Executive Director of Student and Community Partnerships. Erin?
Thank you, Paul. That's a tough act to follow. And now I get to talk about dollars and cents. Thank you, Board of Education and Central Office staff for having me here tonight to speak about the American Rescue Plan. Many of us have had the opportunity to hear Jeff Carlson speak about the budget in the last several months. Mr. Carlson has let us know that our allocations from New York State are about $1.8 million for this budget cycle. Part of those monies are coming from the American Rescue Plan. When the state releases its allocations for school districts, it also releases parameters and an application process for how we are supposed to spend and account for those monies. So tonight's an overview of the American Rescue Plan and what that will look like. It's our proposed budget for the $1.2 million that's coming directly from the American Rescue Plan. And that, of course, is contingent upon this evening, the budget passing. So just some background on the American Rescue Plan. It's actually called the American Rescue Plan and the Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. It was authorized under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. And it will provide nearly $9 billion to New York State to help safely return our students to in-person learning and maintain safe operations while meeting the academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs of our students resulting from the coronavirus pandemic. These funds will help to address longstanding inequities in our communities and schools that were exacerbated by the pandemic so that we can ensure that students most severely affected by the pandemic are provided with the resources and support they need as they recover from its impact. So the U.S. Department of Education, for the ARPSR interim final requirements, requires each local educational agency to do two things. So the first is develop a plan for safe return to an in-person instruction and continuity of services, which thankfully, due to the hard work of the Board of Education, the Central Office staff, building administrators, and the support of the community, we've been able to do this year, beginning in September 2020. And the second requirement is to develop a plan for the use of the ARPSR funds, which is what we are doing right now. So we spoke a little bit about the application process in the beginning. We have actually not yet seen the application process for the ARP. They've given us some parameters for beginning to take a look at how we're going to spend those monies. And as with State Ed, we typically get updates frequently from them. So right now, they're telling us that these are our allocations for today, but they may be adjusted. So moving forward, right now, our allocation for the Three Village School District with the ARPSR funds is $1,256,228. Now, the state is requiring that we reserve at least 20% of these funds to address learning loss through the implementation of evidence-based interventions and ensure that those interventions respond to students' social, emotional, and academic needs and address the disproportionate impact of COVID-19 on underrepresented student groups. So how that breaks down for us here? So right now, our proposed plan for 80% of the funds, which is actually approximately about 79%, is to spend a little over $990,000 on instructional staff due to COVID, our COVID instructional staff for the 2020-2021 school year, the 2021-22 school year. Again, this is all based on the outcome of today's election, and those could be adjusted accordingly depending on our need fiscally as we move forward. The other approximately 21%, which is just over $265,000, goes to that 20% that was discussed earlier. So that would cover the COVID social worker that was hired to support the remote elementary school this year. It will also cover the salary for the probationary social worker to support our SEL needs in our elementary schools moving forward. It will also cover our summer academic interventions in math and literacy for the summer 2021-2022. That program is free to district residents by invitation. That will take four weeks this summer and then next summer. It will also fund our ENL Jump Start program for this summer. Typically, our ENL students spend the summer immersed in their native language. So the ENL Jump Start program allows them to come back to school for a period of time prior to the school year starting to re-acclimate to being in English instruction. And then our ENL homework clubs, which we currently have at each of our buildings that house our ENL programs. We have one at Mount, one at Murphy, and one at Ward Melville High School. And again, that's to support the instruction during the day after school with students doing homework. With many of our non-English-speaking families are unable to support their children doing homework. So the homework club fills in that gap for them. So as I said, this is really a proposal. This presentation will be posted to our district website and to our district's reopening plan. We will continue to update it there as we get more information from State Ed regarding our allocations, obviously pending the budget this evening. This is some resources that you can take a look at if you're interested in learning more about the American Rescue Plan. Also, if you had any feedback or if you had any questions or you wanted to contribute some responses regarding tonight's presentation, you can send an email directly to
Does anybody have any questions for Erin? Erin, thank you so much for your dedication and effort.
That brings us to items for board discussion. Is there anything for the board to discuss at this time? See, Jonathan?
So I understand that Governor Cuomo said that now that we've reached 70% vaccination rate and he's lifting the COVID protocols, what does this mean for our schools? And can we, can we, are we legally permitted to have one graduation?
I know that there's probably been a lot of confusion over the last few weeks with information coming from the New York State Department of Health and from some of the conversations that have taken place at the state level. So yes, we have met the threshold or exceeded it today. However, just prior to Governor Cuomo's presentation press conference today, the Department of Health did send information out to superintendents. And there are exceptions to the lifting of the protocols since we've reached 70%. It does not impact school mask-wearing. So indoors, masks for schools will remain as they are. The governor was pretty clear in stating that, as well as the Department of Health, with regard to the remainder of the school year. So there is no change from the CDC, no change from DOH with any of that guidance. With regard to graduation, I know that we had anticipated, and I'm sure many of us hoped, that there would be a change in ceremonies that are to be held both indoors and outdoors. However, the current guidance remains in place. And what that basically says is that for indoors, it's 250; for outdoors, it's 500. However, if you choose-- I'm going to go back. So most of our ceremonies that are larger or close to 500 are taking place outdoors. What the governor has stated and what the Department of Health is, has advised along with the CDC is that if you are vaccinated and you're outside, you do not need to wear a mask. And you do not need to be six feet of separation. However, if you are unvaccinated, you still do not need to wear a mask, but you must be six feet of separation. So for us, when we're looking at that information, we're not going to segregate our students from those who are vaccinated to those who are unvaccinated or our parents and our guests and saying, well, you're vaccinated, but you're not. So we have to have some people six feet apart and others don't have to have that physical separation. That, that's one element. If we go above, and also, we do not need proof for somebody to say, "I'm vaccinated." We would take word of mouth. That is acceptable. If you go above the 500 number and you're outside, you still vaccinated individuals can sit together. And they do not need to obviously wear a mask. However, unvaccinated individuals would have to be six feet apart. So if we look at our graduating class at Ward Melville High School, where we have close to 600 students, so we'll do the math, and we try to separate our 600 students, which we know that not all are vaccinated, by six feet, there is no possible way we would be able to do that on the front lawn of Ward Melville High School. We would either have to look for a different venue or change the venue from the front of the building. Also-- Also, with parents, we're not going to segregate parents from the vaccinated to the unvaccinated. And once you go over 500, you also have to have proof of vaccine. So it's not that we can just take word of mouth. However, one of the thoughts that we had, given the regulations, is that if we stuck with the four ceremonies, that we would allow more than two guests per graduate to come to Ward Melville, because we could accommodate that on the front lawn of Ward Melville and at least keep that tradition. We understand and respect that our students would love to graduate. They've been together for 13 years. This is very hard. I mean, last year, we had the 11 ceremonies, and we know it's difficult. But we need to follow the law, and I don't see any way around it at this point, given the size of our graduating class.
Thanks.
Okay. That brings us to items for board action. D, textbook adoption.
The World Languages Department has reviewed textbooks for a replacement for the AP French Language and Culture textbook. What you have in front of you is the approval from the committee and proposal for the acceptance of the new textbook.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Second. Okay, Dr. Kermit. All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Okay. Approval of administrative interns.
The district has three administrative interns for this coming school year, and these are the three that are in your proposal this evening.
Okay. We need a motion. Mr. Visser, second. Dr. Kermit. All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Okay. Yes. Approval of non-proprietory user agreement.
In order for our students in the science research program to work with Brookhaven National Labs, we must have an agreement with Brookhaven National Labs. This is the agreement that's in front of you for approval.
Dr. Kermit, second. Mr. Cornwright. Any discussion? All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Okay. G, approval of revised school reopening plan.
This is our current school reopening plan, and this was to make the revision stating that masks outside are completely optional. So that plan is posted to the district website with the current revision.
Okay, we need a motion. Mr. Visser, second. Mrs. Boofblinka. Any discussion? All in favor? Post. Abstentions.
The current Board of Ed policy on student wellness, 5405, had its genesis about 15 years ago, and periodically, federal and state regulations change, which require us to update our policy to bring it into compliance. We are at the conclusion of a triennial review, which requires us to do that review. This policy now brings our policy into compliance with both federal and state regulations. It is very similar to the existing policy. It tightens up some of the language. It also brings us greater awareness of nutrition. The wellness of our students is linked to nutrition, physical activity, physical fitness, as well as health, lifestyle, education that is brought about in our various programs. There's the obvious requirement that the foods that we serve in our cafeteria in our schools meet those state and federal standards in order for us to get federal funding. And that's really what this policy does. There's no mystery to it.
Any questions? Should I look at it? What? No?
No pepperoni.
No pepperoni. Okay. You need a motion? Second. Ms. Cornwright, any other discussion? All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Motion carries. Bring us two bids.
This resolution is, the recommendation is to reject two bids that we did. In both cases, one case, the service will be, we can provide in-house at a better price than we can get elsewhere. And the other is the pricing came in higher than what we can get off of one of our cooperative bids.
Okay. Dr. Kermit, second. Mr. Visser, any discussion? All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Okay. J, the renewal of license agreement with the American Society of Composers, Authors, and Publishers. That's...
This is an annual agreement we have for royalties on various music that's used in the district.
Okay. I need a motion. Second. Mr. Visser, second. Mr. Cornwright, any discussion? All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Motion carries.
Mrs. Gish, if you'd like, you could do K, L, and M together. They all relate, they're all various forms of special education contracts.
Okay. Mr. Cornwright, second. Mr. Visser, any questions? All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Okay. That brings us to transportation services.
The first one is extension of our large bus athletic trip and field trip contract with Suffolk Transportation Service.
Okay. Mr. Visser, second. Dr. Kermit, all in favor? Abstentions. Okay. Next.
Next one is extension of our minibus contract for school year and for summer, also with Suffolk Transportation Service.
Need a motion? Mr. Visser, second. Mrs. Boofblinka, was that a yes? Okay. Any questions, discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Acceptance of donations.
We have three donations. The first is a scholarship check for $1,000 donated by Suffolk Transportation for the Ward Melville High School Scholarship Fund. We also got a $4,000 scholarship check from Suffolk Transportation in recognition of four Section 11 championship teams from Ward Melville High School. And we also received a Fisher upright piano donated by Tracy Beauchamp.
Dr. Kermit, second. Mr. Visser, any discussion? All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Okay. Declaration of surplus equipment.
First item is an upright piano from Murphy Bandroom, since we now have a newer piano that was just donated to us. And that is really in unplayable condition. And then we have some various camera equipment from Sautaukeet Elementary School Computer Lab that is also in unusable condition.
Mr. Visser, second. Mr. Cornwright, any discussion? Questions? Okay. All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Okay. Surplus textbooks.
We have a number of textbooks from Sautaukeet Elementary School and also from Ward Melville High School, all with outdated material.
Mr. Visser. Mr. Cornwright, any discussion? All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Okay. Item number F, Education Law 913 Examination.
S and T, you could probably take together. This is involving the discussion that we had in the exec session about particular personnel and examinations for those employees.
Okay. Mr. Visser, second. Dr. Kermit, all in favor? Post. Abstentions. Okay.
These are the non-aligned, non-instructional salaries that we discussed in executive session, and they're on the agenda for your approval.
Okay. I need a motion. Second. Mr. Visser, second. Second.
This is for the...
What? Yeah, the counselors and...
Maybe we should say that, life guards.
Right. Some of these, right, some of these brings it into compliance with minimum wage. Okay.
Say, "life guards."
Life guards.
So moved.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Motion carries. Personnel matters. Instructional.
Nothing unusual here.
Need a motion? Mr. Visser. Mr. Cornwright, any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Motion carries. Personnel matters. Instructional.
Nothing unusual here.
Need a motion? Mr. Visser. Mr. Cornwright, any discussion? All in favor? Post. Any discussion? All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Okay. Okay. Now we have recommendation. He's moved. He's on a roll.
But W and X, right?
Okay, what is? Yes, W. Okay. Any questions? All in favor? Post. Abstentions. That was W. Now we're up to X.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Here we go. Now, appointment of Board of Registry and Election Workers for the June 15 school budget revote. I would think you'll make that. Mr. Cornwright, second. Mr. Visser. All in favor? Post. Abstentions. Motion carries. Okay. So that brings us to the results of the annual budget.
We still have Z?
Z. Oh, yes. This is the... Okay, Mr. Visser. Mr. Cornwright, all in favor? Post. Abstentions. Now we're up to the budget revote. Do we have any?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
I forgot to ask before about the wellness policy. I noticed, am I understanding this correctly? Sorry. Am I understanding correctly that there was language before that we weren't allowed to sell foods of minimal nutritional value? And now, it looks like there's language related to that foods have to meet competitive foods' nutrition standards, and we struck the other language. What does that, what's the meaning of that change?
I would defer to our Director of Child Nutrition, but I am taking that to mean that those standards were subsumed into those new guidelines.
Because I remember before, it said, you know, we couldn't put candy and things like that in the vending machines, and that language doesn't explicitly...
It still has to meet the minimum nutritional value.
It does? Okay. Because it just says that it has to meet competitive...
Which includes those guidelines, those standards.
Yeah? Okay. Okay. So there's not going to be, we're not going to start selling candy in the... Okay. Okay. Sorry. My radical anti-pepperoni agenda now includes candy. Sorry.
Okay, we're going to go into public participation at this time. We have... Public participation will be a half hour in length. Each speaker has three minutes, and it will be timed. We will probably need to stop at some point if the results of the revote come in. So the first person is Shoshana Herschgwis, who wants to speak about the Anti-Racism Task Force.
Excuse me, Shoshana, just one second. Hi. Okay. We're starting time at 9:09.
It's on, yeah. Thank you so much. My name is Shoshana Herschgwis. I'm a parent in the district of two elementary-age children. I'm also a member of the district-wide Anti-Racism Task Force that Dr. Gold described so beautifully tonight, and I'm here to really speak up and affirm the work that we've been doing and the necessity for it to continue. I want to address the elephant in the room, which is critical race theory, which is a term that's been bandied about a whole bunch over the last few months. And I need to tell you, I'm a public school-trained teacher. I taught for 10 years in K-12. I've been at Stony Brook University for 12 years as well, beyond that. I never heard of critical race theory until a few months ago, and I had to Google it, as I imagine many people did. And when I went down that rabbit hole, it never led me to educational websites. It led me to legal ones. So I want to make the point that this is not a mainstream educational issue, and you know it because Pearson has not made money off of it yet. So, true story. I really think that this has become a distraction, and it is an astroturfed one, from the issues that we really need to talk about in this district and really across this island. And the reason that this work is so important is that we live in one of the most segregated areas in the country. We, in no small part due to the redlining that has been exposed, and that makes the experience of children different, depending on their zip code and also depending on their skin color. And we know that things like the COVID pandemic impacted Brentwood very differently than it impacted us. We know that the smell right next to the Brookhaven landfill at Frank P. Long Elementary smells very different than the air where we live. And we also know that Black parents have a talk that I will never have with my children. And that is why this work is so important, because when we live in as segregated of a community as we do, we need to understand where other people come from so that when our kids go out into the world beyond this enclave, they can be educated global citizens who have empathy and understanding beyond their own experience. So I'm asking you, I know that there's a lot of angry people in this community. I know lots of people are coming at you and pointing fingers. I'm asking you to stick with this work because we need it. We need it because if you visit the community pages in this district, you hear a lot of really scary, angry stuff that makes children less safe. If you see that swastika at Sautaukeet Elementary, you know there are issues in this community that have been underneath the surface that are now in plain sight. We have to do this work because the only way we get past these divisions is to have some discomfort and work through them and be a better community for our children and for when they go into this world to be global citizens. And my time is up, so thank you.
Kate Jones Cologne on the Anti-Racism Task Force.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Kate Jones Cologne. I'm the parent of an eighth grader at Jelena's and a fourth grader at Sautaukeet, and I'm also a member of the local clergy. And I am here tonight to thank the district also for the commitment this year and ongoing to the essential work of diversity. to the essential work of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I served this year on the Anti-Racism Committees at Satakeit and at Jelena's, and I am very grateful for the work that was begun in those conversations. I'm also really eager to continue, strengthen, and build in the year ahead. We have a fundamental choice as a district and as a community about whether we embrace diversity or insularity, build inclusion or barriers. What always strikes me is that the kids want to learn expansively. They want their experiences to be as broad as possible. They long for learning that expands their horizons, and by expanding the diversity of their curriculum and their teachers and their perspectives, we prepare them to be critical thinkers and citizens. And so I think our job, both as an educational system and as a community, is to really deepen our commitment, even and especially against false narratives that seek to distract. I hope the Board and the administration take on some of these following steps in the year ahead, an expanded commitment to a curriculum that includes a breadth of people's stories, a commitment to diversifying the staff of our schools, and I think that has to happen really intentionally and creatively, and a commitment to hiring a trained DEI administrative position that can sustain this work and support educators in it. We have incredible resources locally that can support this work, and in particular, we are understanding more fully our local history and the stories that aren't generally being told. For example, fourth graders learn about the culprisiring, and they often sometimes visit the cemetery at my church to learn about that. But I'd love to see them also visit and learn about the rich community and history of the Christian Avenue Bethel AME District. And this kind of broadening of their learning isn't political, it's just history. Our children are learning all the time. They are learned from what they see around them. They learn from what we don't tell them. They learn from the way we talk to and about one another. And when they leave our Three Village School District, beyond any academic benchmark, my primary concern is how will we have shaped them as citizens and human beings who will help us build a better world? Thank you.
Anti-racism and the budget.
I am Joel Diamond, and I've been living here since 1980 in Three Village. My son went through the whole school system. He's 50 years old now. And I'm from an organization that we have here called Multicultural Solidarity Long Island. There's about 500 different levels of participation of people that we have, and I guess about 100 are local here. And we're half Black, half White, almost half of each, and the rest are everybody else. But Satakeit is our base and Stony Brook. We support the task force, and we support what was said by Ms. Herschgwis and Jones But I want to say that I love the task force, but I don't think the burden should be just on the task force. The Board itself has to stay strong, and some things have to do beyond what the task force is addressing, especially to stay strong against what's really, an elephant in the room again, an anti-racism movement. It's raised its ugly head in Long Island many times, even with violence. Did I say anti...
Anti-racism.
Yeah, there's a racism movement going on, and you've got to stay strong and be on top of it. And there's all kinds of things the Board needs to do. There's certain DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and implicit bias training that I could recommend to you, to the Board, and to all the teachers and the whole staff. And there's versions for the kids. I bet the task force knows about those. But, let's see, let's see. I want to ask the task force and Dr. Gold to follow things I heard you say about involving the whole community. I think that task force should be open to people who are not parents of current students, such as myself, people who watch their kids go through, or anyone else that's interested in supporting the work. I think that would be good inclusivity on the task force's part. Well, you know the way that the... Oh, all right. Thank you very much.
Hello. Good evening. I have a medical exemption if you need to see it. Okay. So, okay, can you hear me? I'll move the mic closer. Okay. Well, I need to be speaking loud, okay, so you can hear me. So, good evening. I'm here for those who can't be here and should be aware, and good evening to the Board of Education. The state says, or the school district says, that they have no critical race curriculum that is not in our schools, while that they call it diverse equity. Myself and many other parents demand to know what is in their curriculum. Taxpayers want to know where their money is going to, just like this book right here, Percipulus. Everyone should know it, and every parent should know what their child is being taught. And I'm going to read some of these explicit lyrics that are being taught to your children, parents, okay? I want to know, also, this is, this was assigned for children in 11th grade, okay? And if you think it's okay, then that's fine. I encourage it to you to read it to your children and to your grandchildren, and if you're comfortable with that, then that's fine, but I'm not comfortable with it, okay? Here are some of the explicit lyrics or words in this book, and if... So if you have young children in the room, if you're watching this at home, please excuse them. What are you doing, jewelry, Julie? You're putting perfume there? There, it has a name. It's called Sex, a Pussy, a Mindo, okay? I want to know who's responsible for letting your children, our children, my child, to read this book. Every single one should know what their kid is reading, okay? This is what you're teaching. Who gave permission for teachers to be reading this? I want to know. Anybody? Can anyone give me an answer? Yes? No? Okay. Well, okay, we're not even to it yet. We're going to listen, okay? There's also a part that says about suicide, okay? "The day after their departure, I made arrangements that I had seen in a film. A woman was drinking wine before slitting her wrists, not having any wine. Instead, I just drank a bottle of vodka. So I couldn't bring myself to push the blade into my flesh. I've always been afraid of blood, but since I was drunk, I just grazed myself, and I followed the film. Instead, I stretched out in a hot tub, waiting for my blood to empty out." I need to find something else. My daughter suffers from depression, okay? And I want to know who is going to be responsible if my daughter reads this and commits suicide? I want to know. Is Three Village going to be responsible for this? No answer from anyone, right? Okay, so besides that, there's also pictures of burning the American...
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
No, excuse me.
Thank you very much. Your time is up.
No, okay. I timed a lot of other people. Okay, time's up, because I want to actually tell what's in the book. There are people burning the American flag in this book. Oh, wipe down the... Man, I don't have COVID, okay? Okay. Well, someone help me read what else I have to say.
Carlos, there's something wrong with this.
Kelly.
Is something, Carlos?
Panic.
Carlos, there's something wrong. Could you come here and fix it? Gary.
Kelly. The fuck is Nicole?
Perspective.
It was off.
Is it on?
Yes.
Okay. I'm here to speak on behalf of medically fragile children. I'm a parent of one. I'm here to share a different perspective. My daughter has severe asthma and allergies. In September, her immunologist and allergist wrote a letter to exempt her from wearing a mask. She was forced to wear a mask. We noticed that her asthmatic cough was triggered. It left a horrible rash on her face. She had headaches, she was dizzy, lightheaded, nauseous. I sent pictures to the superintendent of her face. I sent pictures to the nurse. More importantly, her main complaint was that it was hard to breathe, and breathing is a priority. Multiple mask exemption notes from her doctor were denied by Dr. Sussman, the chief medical officer hired by this Board. Apparently, Dr. Sussman was going to make decisions about my daughter and override her doctors and her medical team's choice of, don't let her wear a mask so that she can breathe. I'm part of that medical team as her parent. Nobody advocated for Sophia at the district level. This went on for nine months. Nobody but her teacher, who I am forever grateful and thankful for. In May, during very high allergy season, she became increasingly ill. She was truly suffering at this point, not able to breathe anytime she wore the mask. I went for another mask exemption. Doctor wrote another very in-depth note. It was denied. Okay, finally, after multiple visits to the nurse in one week, twice in one day, she couldn't walk there, nurse had to come to the classroom, Dr. Sussman finally granted her medical exemption. Throughout this, I was not allowed to speak with Dr. Sussman. He refused, but he thought it was ethical to make decisions about my daughter, okay? He'd never met her. He was not her doctor. She was not his patient. He is not an immunologist. He is not an allergist. He is not even a pediatrician making decisions about our kids. We paid for that. The taxpayer dollars paid for him. Okay. He did not even correspond with anybody at the district level that had contact with Sophia, including the nurse who was treating her in school. You can imagine the emotional distress my daughter has from this, okay? So I'm here because throughout this whole thing, the parents here who supported me were those for parents' choice. They were the ones who heard me. Why are we obstructing our children's faith, putting them at possible risk for hypoxia, especially children like mine, but all in this heat? It is serious. I want to know. I have some questions to ask. Does, what kind of equipment does the teacher have in the classroom? What kind of equipment does the bus driver have on the bus, where it's like 110 degrees right now? Are they all CPR certified, or is there an AED equipment? What happens if a child passes out? Hits the floor, brain injury, hypoxia is very serious, cardiac arrest. What are they going to do for my child? What are they going to do for any of these children? Okay? Parents are an important asset to the medical team. I myself as a...
Thank you. Your time is up.
You're going to listen. I myself am a specialist. I would never make a recommendation about a patient, my patient, ever, without evaluating that patient. I had, I should have had a choice in my child's decision. Parents' choice. If you hired Sussman to do anything, it should be to be parents' choice and to be honoring mask exemptions, not hired him to deny all necessary mask exemptions.
Good evening. First, I hadn't planned on speaking about this. I want to thank Dr. Gold and the Curriculum Committee for sticking so strictly to the curriculum. I am a public school social studies teacher, and I can tell you that a lot of the things that they talked about are in the curriculum. It's not just things that are being pulled out of the air. This is stuff that our kids have to learn by the state of New York, so I would just recommend that you check out the social studies curriculum if you want to check into that. I also wanted to briefly come before the Board and praise you and the community generally up to this point for the way that we have conducted our meetings. While we are frequently discussing issues that challenge our community, we have done a great job, in my opinion so far, of disagreeing with character and civility. As other districts on Long Island seem to face the inability to talk to each other like adults, shouting at each other, interrupting demeaning students brave enough to speak in front of their own community, I'm proud to say that to this point, we have been able to keep our conversations passionate, resolute, and yet with an understanding that we are all working towards the same goal, successfully educating our children. I hope that in the months and years that I continue to live in this district, I have children in Mount, that I will be able to maintain that pride in the ability that our community has been able to stick to to this point. So I thank you for that, and I hope that that continues to be the benchmark for who we are as a group. Thank you.
Hi. I have a few things I would like to address as a parent, not only to the Board but to fellow community members unable to attend here tonight. I'm concerned about the future of our schools. We have now achieved 70% of Cuomo's arbitrary vaccination goal. Restrictions have been lifted basically everywhere aside from schools. Infection rates are less than 0.5%. We are all free now, but our children are still being punished and given the most restrictions. Kids are being robbed of some of the most important and exciting parts of their childhood due to these outrageous guidelines. I understand you aren't medical professionals or are following CDC, DOH guidelines, but you also have school nurses at your disposal who are professionals who could possibly help you construct a letter to fight for a choice, to help make our plans for the upcoming school year. I'm a paramedic, also certified in pediatric natal critical care. I'm not here to give you a lecture on physical childhood development and detrimental effects of rebreathing our own carbon dioxide and the physiological aspect of developing and growing children. I can attest that there have been more heat-related transports than I've ever seen in my career, and other fellow paramedics have noticed as well. Pediatric calls are increasing and are on the rise. These officials who are making these irrational guidelines and laws are mentally, emotionally, and physically destroying our children. I need to know where this Board stands on masks and parent choice and CRT, although it's being disguised under DEI. And if you are indeed going to fight with us, as many other neighboring districts have, we elected you to be our voice, and I feel as if we're being silenced. This week has been a fiasco with masks, like a tug-of-war game. It's insanity. Fauci's emails even said they're only for sick people, and they really don't work. Superintendents, I've heard, are being threatened by Cuomo and even threatened with licenses suspended. I understand that is a significantly damaging thing, but if enough people stand up and fight, we can and will be heard. We need to stand up to these bullies. Sitting by and just complying isn't what America is. Our founding fathers and thousands of people gave their all for our freedom. Let's respect their sacrifice by sticking up for freedom without fear of retaliation. We should be banding together with other districts to fight for freedom, parental consent, and choice. Who is accountable now and for the future years from now, when our children need continued counseling and are instilled with fear for not complying? I need to be confident when making a commitment to sending my child to a school that the Board really, truly does have the child's best interest at heart and give us parental consent and parental choice and what other influences and what other influences say. Are you going to fight against us for, are you going to fight for us against CRT? Are you going to fight against mandatory vaccines? If you haven't seen the latest news, the vaccine's causing heart problems in adolescent populations. And don't hide behind, we have to follow guidelines. That's what they are. We can't give up on our children. We are being bullied by our governor, and also the fact that suicide rates and opioid abuse have dramatically increased in school age children. I was told that there is no CRI in our school district, yet everything I read about DEI seems like CRT to me. We formed the Anti-Bias Social Justice Task Force, and when I looked at the DEI link on the Three Village homepage, I was shocked at some of the resources.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Your time is up.
My time's up. Just want to say, even someone in North Korea, even someone in North Korea said that North Korea isn't this nuts, who was educated at an American Ivy League school.
Heather Capola.
Hi. Okay. Yeah, so I wasn't going to speak, actually, but got some pretty interesting text messages, Facebook messages from people that obviously oppose parents' choice, I guess, because maybe I haven't been... guess, because maybe I haven't been clear, and I feel like I pretty much have been. That's why I wasn't going to speak. Many of us are just advocating for that, just the choice to make decisions for our children. That's it. I'm not going to tell you what to do for yours, and I just don't want to be told what to do for mine. That's just simply it. And I don't mean it disrespectfully at all. And we've been asking the board, the district, to advocate for, you know, for our kids. And I understand that you can't, other districts do other things, and you can't, you know, make comments on that. But I've sent multiple emails to everybody. Cheryl and Jonathan are the only two that have ever responded, ever. And it's not just me, it's other people. We're asking you for, I've asked for opinions. I've had questions. Never have I gotten an email back, ever, besides from those two. And Cheryl responds to everybody. Like, I don't even know how she does that. That's not, shouldn't be her job. We're asking you guys questions, and we're not getting answers. And, you know, we might get eye rolls and, oh, here they are fighting for, fighting for their kids, or they want no mask, or whatever it may be. But I'm going to put it in a way that you guys can understand, I think, because I'm driving here today. Signs everywhere, right? Vote yes, yes, yes. The budget's going today. I mean, a huge truck with a big billboard on the side of it, outside of the polling location. I guess that's, I know Cheryl took care of that. That wasn't supposed to be there today. Three postcards I've gotten about this whole, to vote yes. So you guys get it. You fight for what you want, right? When you want something, you're going to fight for it. You're going to advocate for it. You're going to send postcards. You're going to send letters to people who didn't vote, asking them why they didn't vote, and tell them to vote, whatever it may be. But you get, you guys know, people know what it's like to fight for what you want. I'm going to fight for my kids, and I'm going to keep coming and fighting for my kids. And other people are going to come and keep fighting for their kids, and I hope they do, even if they oppose what I'm saying, and they believe something different, then they should come, and conversations should be had. Like you said, there's, this district's having civil conversations. We're not having screaming matches like other board meetings that I've been to to support other friends, and that's awesome. But I shouldn't be looked down upon, not just me, I can only speak for myself, for advocating for what I believe is right for my children, for my girls. So, like I said, I know that you guys know what it's like to want something and to put it out there and to fight as hard as you can for it. And that's just exactly what we're doing. And that's what we're asking you to do for our kids. Because if you can advocate this much and spend money on the postcards and all the things, I'm not asking you to spend money to write a letter to a governor. And you're not medical professionals, I understand that, but Dr. Sussman is. And we pay, you hired him to do so. So let's ask him to write the letter. Let's ask the nurses to write a letter, right? And just ask for leniency on our children. That's it.
Okay, Tara.
I just, I just want to, I just want to add something to that. I just, just as a point of fact, I, first of all, I just, I appreciate your comments, and we do, we do respect you for giving us your opinion. And nobody looks down on you, to my, to my understanding. But I just want to, as a point of fact, say that those postcards and et cetera, those don't come from the board. Like, we don't pay for those. That's not from us. Yeah, I just want to, I just wanted to clarify that. Those don't come from the school district in any, in any way.
Okay. Okay. Tara, she, her roots out. I'm sorry. I think I mangled your name.
Good evening, everybody. Another huge concern that I have, I was told there's no CRT in our school district, yet we are hiding it as DEI. We have adopted it. We formed an anti-based social justice task force. What happens when this organization becomes consumed with special interest groups? Make no mistake, when you click on the DEI link on the Three Village homepage, the resources are all from those who support CRT. A link for this is right on the page as well, coming from the NYSEBOE. CRT is an initiative vowed to be forced by the new region's counselor, Lester Young. Mr. Young claims white people, mostly of European descent, succeed at a higher rate than people of color, and because of that, wants to deconstruct the American system of education, or at this point, government education. In Brooklyn, Asian and Indian students are excelling above other students in entrance exams to special high schools, and now they want to cancel entrance exams. Apparently, merit alone isn't enough. When you lower standards, people lose the ability to think critically. We need more of that in our schools, critical thinking, not CRT. A young Korean woman even expressed her fears at the indoctrination. She was exposed to an American Ivy League school and stated, even North Korea, isn't this nuts? Our board wants us to openly trust them, but there's no transparency. I've made calls regarding CRT and assured it wasn't in our schools. I'd like to know if there have been any equity training or diversity training that our tax dollars paid for. Has Elaine Gross been involved in anything to do with our schools? Anyone who questions this generally with concern seems to be automatically labeled. Has anyone seen the books, the podcasts, and the links that are in the resources when you look at this? I have to ask, is this what our board supports? My existence as a second-generation European descendant and my child's existence is a threat because my child doesn't see skin color or differences, and he has a very culture-filled class currently? No. He sees friends. To teach him anything different is an atrocity. This harmful curriculum has no place in our schools. Merit-based achievement is not equitable. This is how China forced communism, through class wars and fermenting hate between communities.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Your time is up.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's do something about this.
Okay. I don't know if you're ready, Inger, for the budget results, but that has concluded the 30 minutes of public participation for this evening.
Okay, the results are in. Total, yes, 2,027. No, 3,211. The budget failed. I can go over the individual numbers with you. B240 machine, zero, yes. Three, no. Tabulating machine, T964, 654, yes. 1,131, no. T966, 559, yes. 911, no. T965, 645, yes. 1,025, no. Absentee ballots, 169, yes, and 141, no. Totalling 2,027 for yes and 3,211 for no. We still have to certify the results.
That brings us to AA. Certification of the vote. Do we have a motion? Mr. Cornrich, second. Mr. Belinka, all in favor. Post, abstentions. Did you want to say something? No. You're not gonna, no. Okay. Okay. Okay, we need a motion for adjournment. Second, all in favor. Post, abstentions. That's it.